And Mr. Mayor, we always do this right before. The one that I'm aware of that likely possibly was not going to attend was Councilmember Corbin.
Corbin, right, and we're waiting for Mr. Peters and we're waiting for Mr. Garcia. Oh, I see Mr. Peters is on.
Oh, it was probably eating supper, so.
Me too.
Yeah, I hear him. Do you eat cornflakes or what?
Captain Crunch. And we've got, and Dave, you're gonna have to help me because I'm good at counting council members. I'm not as good at counting Board of Public Works members. I want to try to make sure we've got as many people here as we can before we get going.
Yeah, we've got Diane and Paul and Tim and PJ and Sue. Yep, so we have all the voting members and I think, I don't know if Bob Schalander is going to be able to join us. He's our township ex officio member liaison from the townships. So, but we've got all five voting members of the board.
Good, I thought so. It's always easier to tell who's here. It's always hard for me to remember who's not here, especially if we're not sitting around a board table. So, and, and I think we're, it's just Raul that we're missing. We'll give him another minute because he's oftentimes signing in just at the last minute there. And it looks like Matt's, and there's Raul. Excellent, we'll let him get, everybody get fully connected. Anybody else that's there waiting, Matt, that it would be polite to wait for? All right. Sounds good, well, well, let's get started. It is 6:31 on Wednesday, March 10, 2021, and this is a joint.
5:31.
I'm sorry, 5:31, I'm used to 6:31, appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
This is a joint session of the Holland City Council and the Holland Board of Public Works Board of Directors. Welcome, Board of Public Works members, good to have you here. And we also have the members of the broadband task force, welcome to you as well to the city council meeting here this evening. We're going to start with public comment. We provide an opportunity of public comment for public comment at every one of our public meetings. It's part of the Open Meetings Act. This is just as a reminder to those members of the public who might be interested in speaking. This is one-way communication. We do not engage in discussion during this time period. We don't answer questions during this time period, but it gives you the opportunity to speak to council. In this instance, also members of the Board of Directors of the Holland Board of Public Works. You will be limited to three minutes during the study session. Our Assistant City Manager, Matt Van Dyken, will time you and when your time is up, your microphone will be muted. And with that, is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak to council or the Board of Public Works at this point? If so, you can raise your hand and Matt, if we could do, and it is, it's limited to three minutes. I'm seeing that from City Manager Keith Van Beek. And we'll start with Dan Morrison and we'll get you unmuted, Dan, and your time. Please state your name and address for the record before you speak.
Daniel Morrison, 99 West 11th Street, so hello from the other end of the block. We're talking broadband tonight and I'm very excited about that. I've been privileged to be on the Task Force Advisory Council. And I think, I just want to share that I think this last year has really shown, or hope it's shown, just how critical good internet is to everyday life. And that's not changing and going away anytime soon, from keeping in touch to communicate, communicating with doctors even. But school, work, work is now done at home, school is now done from anywhere. So, we've learned we need good connections and we've also learned that those connections are not evenly distributed in our city today. So, I look forward to talking more and pushing this issue forward, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next, Matt, if you'd unmute Joe Spalding. I know that Joe had a little trouble last week getting his microphone working. Hopefully you're able to do that this weekend. Joe, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Joe Spalding. I think my microphone's all fixed up here and my address is 307 Riley on the north side. I wanted to say that I really appreciate the council taking the time to go over this crucial issue. It's been an issue, you know, for a decade at least. I know that the schools had laid infrastructure for the backbone of fiber a long time ago. And this has been on the table or a potential possibility since municipalities started providing broadband as a utility service. And I know I spent a few months living in Chattanooga a few years ago where they, where they do provide this service. And it's a gigabyte up, gigabyte down, $70 a month. And I know there's no promises in terms of the price schedule on the backend of this. But in terms of the importance of this, there, there's very few more crucial issues. This is, it's not, it's not just equity equalizer. It really is, it's a boon to the economy from the top to the bottom. The amount of information that's available online is something that can't be overstated. And the future of the economy is increasingly, especially at the individual level, tied to our ability to be fully connected to the internet. So, if we want to keep making sure that Holland produces not just jobs, but retains the type of talent that has been a crisis in the state of Michigan for a very long time, we absolutely have to do everything we can to make sure this moves forward. And I personally look forward to advocating on this issue in any way that I can. So, I just wanted to once again thank the board and thank the BPW as well. Because I know this is a lot of work, but at the end of the day, the payoff is just going to be fantastic, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council or the BPW board at this time? I know we had a couple of people sign on during that, during those comments. We're in our public comment portion of the meeting right now. If there's anybody interested in speaking to council or to the Board of Public Works, please just raise your hand or put up the hand emoji and we'll recognize you. And seeing none, I will close the public comment period and we'll move on to the broadband project update and discussion. And I'm going to hand it off to City Manager Keith Van Beek, Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, Board members, Task Force members and other interested citizens. We're excited about tonight. I will make one note, just so everyone knows, if you do have the agenda in front of you and the agenda packet. And if you don't, we did have one e-public comment also. And we don't receive and file those at our study session meetings typically. But I just want to call people's attention that we, we did receive one of those e-public comments. So, take a look at that if you're interested. But as we launch into this topic, just a few comments and context from me before I hand it off to Dave and then the rest of the BPW team that's going to make a presentation to you tonight. One, you know, one of the reasons that we're here, it's not the only reason. It's probably the, the, the most pressing reason, which is a good one, is that council requested, following up on our advance process here in January, to have updates on a variety of topics and particularly a variety of topics that were high priorities that came up from their conversations. And broadband was definitely one of those. And so, that is one of the reasons that we're here tonight, is just to open up that so we can give an update. But we can also give space for, in this context, not only council, but also the BPW board to have discussion and possibly kind of reweight or kind of, you know, provide a different direction there. The second thing is just as we move forward and Matt, maybe if you want to pull up the PowerPoint presentation at this point. There we are, thank you, Matt, and go one more screen forward. What you'll see here is that, just as a reminder on that graphic on the right-hand side, and this was before, before COVID, this has been a priority of council and of the BPW board. And we set up this task force and the, the construct of that task force was that there was a directive that Dave Coster and myself to investigate and eventually bring back recommendations on weather and that, and then also how to, to get universal access throughout the city and potentially the BPW service area. And what we brought to council and what council, you know, approved or enabled us to do is that we had a great advisory group members and they're all listed here. And I know that we have several of them on the call tonight. We also know that there were several that were not able to make it. But we're very interested and are going to watch the recording. And I just really want to thank that these task force members, they've been a great sounding board. They've given us great insight and we appreciate it. And what you can see there is they've not only had meetings and discussions, but then in particular, you see the working group members there, which is a combination of BPW and city staff that were working on that as the mission, the mission says there, engaging the community. And we were definitely talk about that this evening, that we're evaluating where we are currently. And then to really take a look at developing concept and funding options. And that's not, and you'll notice there, it's not just one option, it's multiple different options that we've been poking and prodding, if you would, and taking a look at other models throughout the nation. And then working through the process there, validate with community source, support and commitment. And then ultimately, again, then that's where, with the support of that group, with the input of that group, Dave and I would be making a recommendation back to council and the BPW board. So, we're excited about letting you where, know where we stand. And also giving you an update of where we stand in that work now. But also, we definitely want to give you a sense of next steps. And with the urgency that some of the speakers talked about in public session and the feedback that you're going to hear momentarily that we heard on your listening tour, I think that's going to launch us into the possibility for a really nice discussion with you all tonight. So, again, I'm going to hand it off to Dave at this point, who will make a few other comments on context and kind of the history of the broadband as an option in the BPW. And then we're all eager to hear Pete Hofswell talk, who is a real passion of his and does great work at the BPW. So, again, thank you and we look forward to this conversation for me.
Yeah, so if you can keep that slide up, thank you, Keith. Thank you to the Mayor, City Council, members of the BPW board and members of our advisory group. I want to thank all of you for your support and continued direction and guidance for Keith and for me as we work through this. I think it's important for people that might be viewing at home tonight, just to kind of review a little bit of history on what brought us to this point. And the BPW has been in the broadband business for many years. The discussion that we heard under public comment about the school systems investing in fiber optic, that was actually a partnership that we, we engaged in as well. So, we, we share some of those fiber strands or own some of the sheath that is moving throughout that network. But really, it kind of started with serving our own operations at the BPW and improving the connectivity and communications there. But over time, under some smart decisions, we found that by a little over investment in the number of strands, we could start to make broadband available to other benefits in the community as well beyond our own, own needs. And the school system has been one of those. But we provided some direct connections between healthcare facilities over time, the library. We've leased out what we call dark fibers, which don't have any electronics on them. But other providers bring their own electronics to the table to help them reach other customers. And then we've also partnered with internet service providers and other service providers beyond internet service providers to bring connectivity and options to some of our bigger customers in the area. And so, we have a lot of, a lot of arrangements with big industries throughout the community as well. And we've grown that over time, it's been pretty successful. And I think our customers that we have are, are appreciative of the BPW's approach, just like they are on electric, water and wastewater. A few years ago, there was a challenge put to the BPW and to the city about how we can maybe expand some of our reach into the smaller business and into the residential sector. And because of some technology changes that were coming along at that point, we launched into a pilot program in our core downtown where we connected three buildings up and did a test over a period of time to make sure that we understood the technological issues as well as, you know, some of the, maybe even customer interaction sort of issues associated with that. That was a successful pilot that we grew into expanded pilot between 7th and 9th Street and between Garrettson on the east end and Maple on the west end to really connect up a potential 400 or so customers in that area. We have well over 100 customers connected on what we call our shared gigabit system. It's a gigabit upstream and downstream and it's something that is a real differentiated opportunity and experience for those customers. And again, that's been a pretty successful model. I think we have a lot of very happy customers down in that area, happy businesses and residents down in that area. And we're growing off from that system. The growth has been sort of, as demand has come forward, the BPW looks at that opportunity and says, you know, can we, is there enough demand here to build out and be able to recover our investment over a fairly short period of time? And, and we've targeted growth in some of those areas. After we expanded that pilot, the city council has kept this a priority for, for a few years now. This has been on the list of things coming out of the city council's advance, you know, every year. And the, the ask of the BPW and of the city staff, Keith and myself, was to take this model that we've done and see what we could do to potentially expand that to be more universally available throughout the community. And how could we do that, whether the community was interested in a community-owned asset like the fiber optic system? And if it were, you know, how could we actually deploy it and make that universally available and provide the funding for it? And so, it's really that charge that we've been working on here. And, you know, I'm really happy to be able to turn this over in a minute here to Pete Hofswell. As you see the, the list of people over on the side and the working group members, Pete Hofswell is our broadband superintendent, broadband utility superintendent. And Pete's really been the leader of our working group, who have been starting the engagement process with the community and trying to learn about the perspectives that are out there and how people think they might be able to use that in the future. So, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Pete so he can walk you through the agenda and start talking about the things that we have done. And then I'll come back in a little bit later to start talking about the next steps and start talking about some of the potential funding models. So, Pete, go ahead and take it away.
Hey, thanks, Dave. Matt, you could advance the slide there. Tonight, we want to talk about what we've been up to and what we're going to be up to through the task force in addressing this opportunity of further broadband development in our community. We're going to talk about some activities that have been going on with the listening tour. And the noted, a couple of notes on COVID-19 effect that we've heard in the community comments at the beginning. It's definitely impacted things. And we'll move into what we're working on with surveys, cost study, communication plan, so forth. We want to get through these slides, I think, pretty quick, Dave, and move into a discussion so we can talk about this as a team and work towards what our next steps will be and what a timeline might be too, if we're, if that's an appropriate discussion. So, go ahead, Matt. You know, you guys are all familiar, I think, with community-based decision-making. The broadband task force is utilizing this playbook to work on what we want to do moving forward. This isn't a bunch of folks sitting in a room deciding what to do. This is an engagement with our community to look at the opportunity, discover the value and come up with a plan to move forward. This is the same playbook we used when we decided as a community to build the Holland Energy Park. And a very successful project. We actually signed the completion of that in broadband, in the board meeting this week, it's very exciting. So, much celebration as we could do in COVID times. We're also using community decision, community-based decision-making in waterfront Holland. And some of the viewers here have attended those meetings, I'm sure. I have myself, found it to be a fantastic way to work together to decide how to move forward. And that's what we're doing with broadband, so go ahead, Matt. The task force most recently has been working on a listening tour. This is one of the strategies of community-based decision-making, is to reach out to constituent group leaders in our community. And these are folks that really understand or have their pulse on the various aspects of our community, whether it's economic development, small business interests, workforce and so forth. We reached out to these leaders, which understand the needs of their various diverse constituent groups in our community and can bring them to the table and say, you know, this is what our folks need. It's a great way to get feedback pretty quickly. So, we've been working on that, unfortunately, not very quickly because COVID really shut us down in speed. So, this is a whole lot of Zoom meetings. We met with over 40 people in these various groups over time and got some great feedback as to the value of broadband. Go ahead, next slide there, Matt. We posed some questions to them and brought those all together in a matrix and sorted those out, categorized them and came up with this output from that process. On the left, you can see sort of a gap analysis. And this is framed in what we use in the National Broadband Plan of broadband development. We look at availability, that's, is it even available? Can you connect to the internet? We found that in our community, pretty broadly, people feel that the current bandwidth that's available is insufficient. It's too slow, it's asymmetrical, which means the download speed and the upload speed are not the same. So, a lot of you are familiar with this, you can download stuff a lot quicker than upload. Find it's not reliable, breaks, goes out, there's outages. And it's not available in our entire community. So, we have parts of our town, as Dave mentioned, you know, we have fiber. We've had it for over 25 years and we have lots of people using it, but not everybody can use it. So, it's not available everywhere. The adoption gap, that is maybe internet service, broadband service is available, but it's not being used for some reason. That's the affordability issue, that's equipment issue. Maybe people don't have the computers, tablets, mobile phones, what have you, to use it. Or they don't know how to use it. And, you know, this is, this, there are some interesting conversations when we talk to the education sector and the Aging Population Center on technical ability to use this stuff. So, when you think about broadband adoption, it's important to remember that it's not just building the fiber and getting a cable to a house, but there's other issues here that we discovered. Finally, in the gaps, we have utilization gaps. People may have it and have access to it, but they don't use it that much. So, maybe it's a difficult to use, doesn't work that well. The services that they are looking for aren't available or they don't know about them. So, sometimes internet is underutilized and that's that third gap. On the right side, we discovered some values to broadband in our community. We said, you know, what in the future, what do you, how would you see broadband as being a benefit to our town? Increased property value from the real estate and property owners, developers. They said, you know, broadband is one of the first questions they ask if somebody comes to look at property. They go, hey, this is a nice property, is there any internet here? How good is the internet? This is a common, common question within the real estate market. We've seen research that shows that it increases property value too, which is very exciting. We talked a lot about talent attraction and business attraction, which is great. We actually have people that have moved to our town because we do have good internet. It's just great. We want to bring more people, I think. Enabling X from home, what I'm talking about there is doing everything from home, whether it's learning from home, healthcare from home, work from home, conducting business from home. So, doing your personal business or running a business, all of these need to have fantastic, reliable broadband. And we found that that's something that people really desire. Future-ready infrastructure, that's something that is going to work for us today. It's also going to work for us tomorrow. It's also going to help us be able to respond to needs. COVID-19 is a fantastic example of this. Our community has really changed, as all communities across the country and world have. And broadband plays a role in responding to the, the needs, the new needs that we've had. Go ahead, Matt. This is just an example of the kind of data we received. I have several of these charts. If you're interested, I can share those in another presentation on another day. But we did ask a question about the future and how you would see broadband being used. And you can see here how the mentions in the comments over all of our sessions collected. People see that tomorrow, we are going to be using the internet in many different ways. Most importantly, doing everything from home is very important, having access. Education is very important, talent attraction is very, very important to our community as well. Go ahead, Matt, thank you very much. We wanted to take just a couple of moments to mention the effects of COVID-19 on this. And the task force started, to be honest, pretty skeptical. What is the opportunity? What are we talking about here? Is this something they really wanted to think and talk about it? We brought speakers in from around the country that are very well-versed in broadband to talk to the advisory group and help them understand the issues and opportunities that broadband, broadband brings. That's a tongue twister. Let me take a breath for a second. The, one thing we saw over the past year, as the task force continued to work, was a understanding of the value of broadband that has come very apparent because of the pandemic. This slide shows, this is from the Fiber Broadband Association. This shows the increase of work from home across the country. It is amazing, 105%. You know, the lowest increase is Jacksonville with 73%, but look at San Francisco Bay Area. I mean, it's a high-tech part of our country, 133% growth in work from home. What's, what's really interesting is that the communities that had good broadband service have been able to grasp this and be successful. And the communities that don't are not being successful. This is a big problem in rural America where broadband connectivity is pretty horrific. If I lived out in the country, and I'm sure we have community members around that do live out in the country, that cannot work from home because they do not have good broadband at all. Next slide, please, Matt. This is a example, on the left, this is Moody's credit conditions from July. So, it's been around for a few months. You can see the effects of the pandemic on the left in e-commerce sales. So, this would be people using the internet to do business, right? A major spike there. But what's really interesting is on the right side, where you see regular users and the first-time users. where you see regular users and the first-time users. Now Moody's in the detail of the study says, they don't expect that those first-time users are going to go away. They're going to continue to use the internet. So this spike that you see on the left isn't going to flatten back down. That demand for online services and uh, good broadband to run it is going to continue to grow over time. This is uh, we um, during the uh, past uh, quarter, uh, the city did a community survey. Some of you watching may participated in that. And one of the questions in there was uh, using um, city resources or devoting city resources to further broadband and fiber optic development. You can see that it rated pretty highly with the fours and fives, which is uh, yeah, I think you should devote more resources. Or yeah, I really think you should devote more resources, uh, accounting for sixty-five point one percent of uh, the poll. Uh, so that is a strong advocacy by our community um, for further broadband development. I think, you know, the people that were on the other side of this probably had questions. It's like, well, that sounds interesting, but I don't know enough about it. And that's what we're going to talk a little bit about here next. I went through those slides about what we've been up to. And Dave, do you think it's worth having a quick conversation about our uh, path? Or should we hold the conversation till later and let you carry on with what we're up to? It's up to you guys.
Yeah, if anybody has any uh, question or anything that keep, that Pete has mentioned prior up to this point. I think we can try to address that if there's something that is a data point in any of those graphs. But if not, um, we just have a few more slides to go through to talk about what we're going to be doing or actually what is in progress right now that we're working on. And uh, I think we'll be able to get to the end of the slide deck here pretty quick and uh, get into that dialogue at that point. So.
Any questions?
Yeah, anybody jumping in at this?
Or comments?
Yeah, Dave, Dave Hookstra.
Yeah, I would just, thank you. I would just say, I think the points been made very, very clearly. Uh, Mr. Morrison has fallen, mentioned it earlier. Pete's done an outstanding job of laying out, uh, I think the need for um, broadband expansion. We've seen, I think, through statistics of the communities interested in it, the fact that we as a council have been bringing this up as a priority for so many years. I don't think we need to make the case anymore that this is essential. I would say, I wouldn't go so far as to say it's as essential as maybe water and sewer, but nearly as close, right? So I think we can assume that this is an urgent need. Um, and I'm, I mean, if you don't get that, you're just haven't been paying attention. Um, not to be offensive, but I think that's the reality. So I'm really, I don't think we need to spend a lot more time trying to make the case for it. It's there. So I'm looking forward to hearing how we can make it happen. And I really appreciate all the effort gone into uh, the research and uh, qualifying the case. That's all.
Pete, do you have an idea of, about how many people in the listening tour participated in the number generation survey-wise?
In the number generation? I'm not sure.
The number of, the number of people that answered a survey to get you the ratings that you got.
Oh, for um, the listening tour. Yeah, the listening tour was nine sessions with uh, forty, about forty participants in, in that. And the questions, you know, were asked and they were pretty general questions that would be responded to in various different ways. So when you look at that chart and you see eleven, that was eleven mentions. So it wasn't really like, I'm going to ask you a question and there's a yes or no answer back. It was I'm going to ask you a question and you're going to get a lot of answers back. So what happened is we had tons of different comments and we categorized those in a matrix that brought the overarching concepts and understanding and um, interest of the listening tour up to that point. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that's fine. I just, I want to have an idea about how many we kind of contacted in that process.
Yes, uh, nine um, meetings um, with um, a lot of those meetings were from a couple, two, two to four institutions. So I could get you the exact number of institutions in detail. It's mostly in that slide. But uh, yeah, lots, lots of input, we thought. We, we were pretty happy with um, the interfaces we had.
Yep. Keith, you had some follow-up on that?
Yeah, and just to clarify, Paul, I think Pete answered your question. But if you were wondering also about the citizen survey that had a different set of results, that was the Frost survey that was done on behalf of the city on a wide variety of things. And I'm not going to know the number exactly, but it was roughly five hundred calls that were made. And it's done in a statistically significant way so that it's a representative sample of the city.
Yes, thank you, Keith. That um, that's a great point. And it may, maybe that's what you're interested to, Paul. On that broad, the broadband question on the community survey, there were three hundred and seventy-five responses. And that's uh, there's a weighted average on that to make sure that we're giving um, equal voice to our entire demographic of our community. And um, on that, um, there was uh, two hundred and thirty-four of those voices were in that positive uh, mode of a three or four vote. That's where the sixty-five percent come up.
Paul, Paul Lilly's got a follow-up. He needs to get uh, unmuted. Paul, just, just so you know, every time you mute, we got to unmute you manually, so.
Okay.
Maybe a little easier to just stay unmuted.
Stay on it. I will. I had my grandson running around here, so.
Well, then maybe you do want to mute.
Yeah, no, I'm okay. I'll, I can turn it down here. Hey, uh, thank you. I'd had looked at the Frost survey in detail, so I understood that. I thought it was interesting that i- it was one of the only elements though in the Frost survey that had that do not invest as much time as you're investing now in, in I think the answer, which I think just says we're going to hit a few people that for whatever reason aren't thinking this is a good move forward. But we'll, we'll address that, I think, as we go along. A great point. Um, there's some excellent demographics that I've done some it, within that. So we can look of what, what portions of the population voted what way. And across the board, it's pretty positive, but there's some pockets of uh, negativity or uh, not sure, not in wanting to invest. And it, it, it begged more questions by me. And I think that's what we're going to work on is to find out more about what that is. And Dave is going to go into that a bit more.
Yeah, Lynn Raymond.
Yeah, right. That might just point to a, a little bit, a need for more education, right? It doesn't necessarily mean that there's um, a negative response, but maybe they just, people just need to know more about it.
You're right, Lynn. That's one of our hypotheses is that it's just not, um, I'm not going to say, yes, you should do that if I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah.
Great. Anyone else? Questions for Pete at this point? All right, carry on, gentlemen.
All right. So Matt, if you can bring the, the slide deck back up. I think uh, great, great uh, uh, conversation there up to that point as well. And I think, uh, yes, we agree that it, it is sort of a decided issue that broadband is important. Um, so, you know, we're not trying to continue to reinforce something that we already know there. But I think what we are going to start to dive into is, yes, while we know broadband is important, is it important that the community own the infrastructure associated with enabling broadband to happen and get throughout the community? And so, you know, we talked about education, we talked about engagement and, and, you know, COVID's been a little bit difficult to allow for some of the engagement as Pete referenced, but we are, I think, we, we also have this opportunity that in terms of it heightening the awareness around the value of broadband. And so if you move on to the next slide, Matt, we want to talk about some of the things that we already have underway and are, are going to be working on. And one of them is continuing on beyond the, the nine groups that Pete talked about and getting a little bit more targeted out there in terms of what we're asking in an engagement survey that's coming up here in April. And so this is be something that would be going out to the entire um, city of Holland, you know, all the residents in city Holland. Uh, and we would be engaging all of them to figure out their, their situation that they are currently in, how they're using broadband today, and whether or not they believe that community-owned infrastructure uh, is a path towards being able to enable broadband use and to increase the universal, or increase the access of broadband throughout the community. And then also willing, the willingness on the part of our community to invest in broadband. Because eventually that's what we're building towards in terms of a, an approach here, is that we're working on a model that would allow for uh, an open access model that would be community-owned, that would provide the ability to bring a lot of different providers to the table to help raise the um, the access, the universal access in the community. But it's something that does, demands a community investment in order for that to happen. So to be able to gauge the level of willingness is an important part uh, of this process. Now, this is also uh, something that's of priority within the, the Ottawa County area as well. And so while this is going on here in the city, there's also a, a survey process that's beginning at the county. And uh, while their survey will actually take a little bit longer to, to achieve, it will be informative and probably instructive to what we're doing here in Holland, just as I think our process and our outcome of a model that we may be pursuing, I think would be instructive to other um, governmental jurisdictions as well beyond city Holland. So we move on to the next slide. So in addition to this survey engagement, we also are educating, working on a communication plan. And the objective overall here is to be able to provide education on the value, the value proposition of a ubiquitous, so universal throughout the city of Holland, community-owned fiber optic infrastructure, that'd be fiber to the prom, premise. And to also express about how Holland could actually achieve this. And we actually going to be using a series of blog posts and stories that we'll be creating to help um, the community understand our vision. And then more specifically about other communities and the successes that have come from the engagement that they've done, as well as um, when we get closer to some data about the actual funding situation, you know, be able to provide that as well. So we're using a website, uh, hosted website here that we have, uh, our fiber.hollandbpw.com for our blog posts as well as our social media outlets. In order to do that, the first blog is written. We're waiting till this meeting to release it. Uh, but you should see that uh, coming out probably as early as tomorrow or the next day. And that'll start a series of, of educational posts um, as we work through this process with the community. Next slide. Uh, we had a very extensive study done to look at how to deploy uh, fiber throughout the community. The model that was explored was one of a um, natural demand aggregation model, um, going where the demand was and then doing it all in rates. Uh, and it's also a little dated, given the fact that this was done back in twenty sixteen. So we're already even engaged with CTC, the company that did this report, to update the numbers, give us a fresh look at where that's at, which will be the formation of, of the uh, funding model and the cost estimating that will uh, eventually be put forward to the community at some point for decision-making around their willingness to invest. So uh, if you want to move on to the next slide, we start to get into some specifics about that. But I think before we get into the specifics on those costs, it's important to remind everybody, especially those at home, what it is we're trying to build towards. So actually, if you go back up one, Matt, there, that's great. Thank you. Um, I think what we've explored before, what we've talked about is open access model, but I'm not sure everybody really understands what that means. And hopefully this graph, graphic here can kind of um, lay that out. If you look at the right-hand side, this would be a situation where as if FedEx and UPS and Amazon and anybody else that delivers products owned their own road. You know, so they all invested in roads to actually be able to bring their product to you. Now, we all know that's not the way it happens today in terms of actual delivery of product. We own the roads as a community. We invest in those roads, we repair those roads, and that allows business to happen across those roads. But it is the way that it happens as it relates to the provision of service across the internet today. You know, whether it's in Xfinity or if it's um, uh, AT&amp;T or, or frankly, anybody else, Charter, Spectrum Charter, they all build their own infrastructure and they then provide services across that infrastructure. What we're proposing here in Holland is something that we could build as a community, an open access model that we could invest in, that's future-enabled, high-speed fiber connectivity to every home, that then would be able to allow all of the providers of products to utilize those, just as we do with roads today. So having that open access platform allows for options, allows for competition, and allows for a lot of things that frankly, aren't even done today because of the enabling um, features associated with that broadband network. It's kind of like looking at electricity back in the early nineteen hundreds and the fact that not every use of electricity could have been conceived of at that time. This opens up opportunities that we believe will take, you know, broadband services in our community to another level going forward, in addition to just providing options. So you move on to the next screen, I'll explain a little bit more about in detail what that means to you as an end user. So we kind of like to take a look at this open access model and split it into tiers, recognizing that ultimately what you're trying to get is service. You're trying to get access to things, whether it's the internet, whether it's phone service, streaming content of some kind, video services. Maybe it's interacting with your healthcare provider, maybe it's interacting with your school. You're ultimately trying to get that service, but these tiers enable that to happen. And I think what we can do is look at these tiers logically, in a way, in a sign where we maybe want to invest as a community and recognize there's an opportunity here to invest as a community, to take control of our own destiny and really sort of improve that universal access in the community. And so the bottom tier recognizes that, that, that graphic there shows that there's a distribution network of fiber that can go throughout the community and be connected to homes. And there's an operational aspect to that, operating and maintaining that. What we're suggesting under this open access model is that can be one system, one network that's owned by the community and operated by the Holland BPW in order to make sure that that system is functioning and working well. Right above that tier are the service providers. And today, you may have heard of some of these. A lot of these are actually using our network today in some aspect, but not necessarily connecting to the residential user. And so our, our goal here would be is that any one of these could provide services across that common network. It could be that those services are internet services to you. And you got companies out there on the left-hand side of that, that lineup there, whether it's Xfinity, AT&amp;T, one-two-three.net, I serve, or all ISP providers, one-two-three.net and I serve today, provide um, services across our network. It could be that these services are telemedicine services or healthcare services of some kind. And so Holland Hospital or other healthcare providers could actually provide a, a network across our system to improve the delivery of those services in our community. We've seen other areas where communities have invested in infrastructure that the school system has actually been a provider of services across that network. And so Holland Public Schools could also be a network service provider across there. And in our core downtown, we've also made ourselves available as an internet service provider. And we don't have to be that for everybody, but we're available to them. If they want to have a, a customer connection with us because they like the BPW and how it provides service in our other areas, whether it's water, wastewater or electric, and they want a common bill from the BPW, we can also provide that service. And what is that doing? It's either providing you access to services that those entities themselves provide, or it's providing you access to a much larger area of services that you want to get elsewhere. And that really represents that tops, that top layer. It's the things that are, we call over-the-top services. And today, it really is becoming the way people are choosing to get their content and to get their service needs met. And so whether it's Hulu or Netflix, YouTube, or Ooma with phone, or any others, there are a number of different acts, a number of different providers that provide things like cable TV lineup or streaming services or phone services, whatever you might need in terms of actual. Or streaming services or phone services, whatever you might need in terms of actual content. Can also come across any of those systems. So that's the model that we're working on. That's what we're trying to do in terms of saying if the community wants ubiquitous deployment. The you, the community wants universal access. The best way for that to happen is for a community investment in that bottom layer, that common infrastructure. In order for that to happen, at the timeframe that you want it to happen. It may be also under a cost structure, that would be a not-for-profit type of cost structure for the community. So I want to move on to the next slide, which gets into some of the descriptions of some of the funding and some of the cost estimating. So again, just for those that might be at home and to remind everybody, we like to think of. The delineation of this lowest level of, of infrastructure, that, that bottom tier here of common infrastructure. As being made up of what we call passings and drops. The graphic on the bottom depicts that, the passings really are kind of like. Uh, a, a, a water main that's going down your road. That water main serves everybody in a particular area of our system, a distribution system for water. And then there's an actual service line that comes off from that distribution main to a home. That you would sort of relate to the drop. And in uh, in that situation, then um, what you've got going on here with the fiber is that again, just like that. Um, we've got uh, a distribution network that we call the passings. Those are things that are really serving everybody within a particular neighborhood or block. And then the drops are the individual lines that go off from that distribution network and connect to the home. When you look back to our twenty sixteen study. The passing cost, we did have this analyzed for just the city of Holland. There's a much larger area for our entire Holland BPW electric footprint that was also looked at. But for the city of Holland, the passings amounted to about twenty million dollars to pass all of the properties. This is about fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty or so passings in the city of Holland. And the, so that was a cost of, you know, roughly about fourteen hundred dollars or so per passing in the city of Holland. And we have some that are very dense, some that are more medium density and some that are lower density areas, but on average, that's what it worked out to. And then the average drop is about thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. Now, part of that, about eight hundred and twenty dollars is the actual fiber optic connector. That goes from the distribution system to connect to the home. The other five hundred and thirty dollars are the actual electronics that are connected to the home that allow then the homeowner to have access. Essentially, it's a wifi enabled device and it also allows for physical connections to phone or to um, uh, to internet. It's an ethernet connection that will allow you to really connect up, you know, all of your uses in a home that you, that need data connectivity. We are already working on an update to those. We've asked CTC to get an update to those numbers and we expect to have that um, in early April. But we tried to estimate at this point without knowing, and again, it's a very liberal assumption here at this point that um, we're using. But if we just take some escalation, you know, over the last few years since the study was done, we've tried to estimate where those numbers would be. And they'd probably be closer to about twenty four million dollar number, twenty four million dollar number now for the, for the passing, if we had to estimate that. So Matt, if you go on to the next page. There are some options. You know, and again, if you look at trying to break out the passing and drops, the physical infrastructure. Versus the operational side of things, our approach would be that we could. Look at an approach where we pay for all of the passings in the community through a millage. And if we used a millage, using bond rates today and whether or not it's a twenty year bond or a thirty year bond to actually. Provide the funding and then the millage would actually be used to support the servicing of that bond. You know, we're thinking that that's probably somewhere in the area of a mil to one, one point zero to one point five mils. In order to do that, to service that twenty four million dollar kind of number. I think for the average home, I think that works out to about nine dollars a month, when you look at it, just for the, that infrastructure piece. And again, obviously, home value would, would influence that number. And it also is dependent upon the uh, the bond terms and the length of the millage that we would put in place, but that kind of gives you a range in there. We also have uh, an option, some options that, that utilize or kind of base off from that. One is that we just use that for the passings alone. Not the drop. The drop could be rolled into the other services that we provide, the ONM and the servicing of that um. Of that network, along with maybe even the internet service connectivity. Or we could also provide that on a wholesale basis, so that other providers who are all on that middle tier could provide the homeowner some service there. If we did the drops through just rates, it probably would need to be recovered over a short, a fairly short period of time. So as an alternative to that, we're looking at the option number two. And the option number two, again, would use that millage for that passings, that distribution infrastructure. And then the drops, which are roughly thirteen hundred and fifty dollars again, per drop. Could be paid for over a commitment from the homeowner. If the homeowner signed up, we could do something over maybe a ten year period of time or something like that. Which again, would amount to about eleven dollars per month over a ten year period of time in order to pay for that. Then you've got the network operations and then the internet service and any over the top selections that people would do on their own. They would have the ability to à la carte, make those selections. Those are the numbers then that would get rolled into the rates essentially for the service, which would dramatically lower the, the rate structure. We don't have the actual number at this point. Um, but again, when we were developing something for our downtown area that did not have any support from a millage. Or through a guaranteed recovery over ten years, we're offering gig service in that downtown for eighty five dollars a month. So by taking significant portions out of that and giving the guaranteed return over a longer period of time. We can dramatically reduce the actual cost of the service that's involved with that. The third option, really one without this support from a, a guaranteed funding source like a millage to support a bond. Is one like we're doing today, but maybe slightly modified. Today, it's purely demand aggregation. Where it takes enough inertia, enough commitment level in a particular area. For us to extend fiber optic into that. So that would be a situation where maybe by geographic area, neighbors would be getting together. And making, making it known that they want it brought into that area. And if we got to a certain level, we would build out. The trouble with that is, that's slower, obviously. It also is not ubiquitous, it's not universal in that aspect. But it's one that would not require a millage. It's one that we could do over time with rates. There's another community, Ammon Idaho. Which we've modeled as well. There, they, what they do is they go to an area and they get a commitment level for twenty years from those customers. Not under a millage, but under a, a request that they say they've got enough people in a particular area to give a twenty year commitment. And we could do that in those particular areas that people gave enough commitment to build out, we'd have some thresholds in mind for that, that we'd have to do that. But again, just as I, I said before, that third model would not achieve the ubiquitous, universal deployment. That the supporting system of a millage would, would do. And so it's important to consider from a direction standpoint for us as well, as we're working through this. Again, our education is around our vision, around the open access capabilities and opportunities that that provides. The value proposition that a universal broadband system means for the entire community. And we're also testing with our, our community, the interest and willingness that they have to support something. And actually bring funding to the table to support that as a community. So it will give you more insight before we're, have to make that um, decision as a, as a board and a council. Uh, but it is uh, just letting you know kind of where we're heading in terms of a, a funding approach with this. So Matt, if you can move on to the next page, is really kind of the end of the discussion and, and at this point. Just opening it up to questions that you have. And to allow you to start a, a conversation and, and dialogue about it. And ul- ultimately, our hope is that for Keith and for me tonight, we get some sense of, of feeling among this group. That we're heading in the right direction, that we're targeting funding models that are appropriate. And that you give us some more defined direction even uh, from where we've even been up to this point. Because up to this point, it has been maybe more of the weather, we should do this. And now I think it's more of the how we should do this.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Mike, you had a question, comment?
Yes, I have a question. Um, save the comment for later, but Dave. Did I hear you, and I'll have to agree a hundred percent with what you just said, your last statement, it's not if, it's, it's when. Um, did I hear you say in your option one, or did I misunderstand you that you would allow? Others unlike what we do with the electrical services right now to put the drops in? Did I hear that right?
No, no, no. We still would, we, it still would be our drops, our physical infrastructure, our electronics on the end. Um, the issue is that we could collect it in a rates, just as we're going to collect. That bottom tier, Mike, has the physical infrastructure, but it also has the operations and maintenance of the network. And so there will be a rate that we would have to charge under a service rate for operating the network. We could include in that the cost of a drop and recover it over a period of time. It would be a shorter recovery time than something where we could maybe get a commitment from the homeo- homeowner over ten years. So that's really the slight tweak or difference in option one and two is just the length of time of commitment the homeowner makes on the drop.
Okay, I must, I must understood you on the hardware side of things then. Um, well, I, I guess. I've not been known to be shy, so I'm just gonna give my comment right off the bat here. Option number two, to me, guys, is the only option that I think is realistic. Um, I, I get where you're coming from with option three, but that puts us exactly in the cherry picking. Group that the private industry has done and has been complaints up to this point. Uh, from the ubiquitous standpoint. We have heard it loud and clear, I believe that this needs to be rolled out to the city. Uh, throughout the city, I think we're going to get more take if we do that. And you float it out there, if, if, if there's not appetite for the millage. Which I don't think you're gonna see, but if there is not appetite for the millage, then you always have option three. But I wouldn't want to start at the bottom and try to work backwards. I think option two with the, the semi-commitment, the, well, I'm sorry, it's a buy-in, first of all, for the millage. It's a buy-in for the areas for the drops and you're allowing people to pay it off in a little bit longer period of time. Uh, to me, that's a win-win-win-win situation. So one voice out of ten. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just add to that, one of the um, key uh, components of this uh, funding model. Is the fact that we're in a competitive market and it needs to be, the, the price you pay for your broadband. Needs to be where you are now with your current provider or better. And um, so what we're looking at with this is instead of you paying. One bill to your internet service provider, this modular component says you pay a bill for your internet service. And then you pay a bill for the infrastructure and the total there is going to be at or less than what you currently pay. And then once the infrastructure pays off on that millage. That goes away. And then we start to see a really wonderful drop in us, out of pocket cost for our community.
Absolutely, and, and you, you're gonna be incorporating your own M uh, funds in there to, to make sure that the system has the integrity. But if, if, it's gonna be part of the education um, be in, in that, people have to understand, okay, we may have two different. Fees, if you will, lack of better terms. But if they think about it, if they're with somebody else, one of the, one of the big guys that are in town there, uh, Uverse, uh, whoever. You're paying that same amount, only it's lumped into one. Whether you realize it or not, you're paying for the infrastructure, that's not cheap. They're not gonna put that millions of dollars out of there for absolutely nothing. It's wrapped into your rate. So here we're being, I see it as a little bit, actually, a little bit more transparent. And to what you just said, you have the chance of that being reduced after a number of years, once the infrastructure is paid for. So again, it's a win-win-win-win situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Lynn Raymond.
Yeah, thank you, Pete. Actually, you answered my question. I was, I was thinking that for someone, the thirteen fifty would be prohibitive. Um, but the way you've described it really answered that question. And I could imagine also that even if it, even if someone, if, if it was prohibitive for someone. Um, perhaps something like the Home Energy Fund, the, the Energy Fund or something like that, that would, we, we could actually finance some of that. Infrastructure uh, for people who couldn't afford it. Um, and you know, I'm sort of thinking about landlords who have a several, several properties. Within a, within a, like several units within a property, how do we encourage that? Um, you know, that contribution, because certainly people who rent don't have the option of adding it. So, so just thinking about incentives and, and those kinds of um, you know, pieces of a puzzle that, that I'm sure you're still thinking about.
Yeah, we've, we've talked a lot about how do we build universal access to our community. When part of the community i- is of, of limited means and it's hard to pay that bill. And is there something we can do? So there's a subsidization component, a social component to broadband development. Which, which was on that um, gaps slide when we were talking about, well, affordability. Um, uh, education and these issues need to be addressed as well. The BPW, Dave, um, might back me up on this. We're the infrastructure company, we're the service company that builds that um, into our community. Um, and we're here uh, with the community to try to figure out ways to, to um, answer these other needs which are difficult.
Well, I think one of the fun, you know, we've, we've explored a lot of different funding models as well. And I think when you look at the um, the millage approach, you know, there's sort of an implied. Property value aspect to that, that's pr- providing that funding. So you get with that a little bit of a. You know, what you're talking about, Lynn.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, exactly.
Yes.
Dave or Pete, uh, is there a uh, uh, any look at the assessment type model like they do for sidewalks and curb and gutter and those sorts of things? I, I just, I'm curious to see.
It, it's a, it, it's been a uh, it's been a um, constant, not a constant, it's been a um, once in a while. Uh, robust discussion between Keith and me. Um, because I'm familiar with it with water and wastewater, right? But uh, you know, Keith is, is, you know, correct that, you know, there's a lot of. You know, a lot of issues that go along with that too, and a lot of requirements um, that go along with that. Assessments do require that there's a um, commensurate improvement in the property value uh, associated with those things. And so as, as you look at, you know, and then there's other things that go along with that too, in terms of the density. Um, situations and, and build out, we typically build out water in an area and then we have a cost for that area. Um, and so you may have a lot of different um, cost structures under those assessments. So I know that that's more of a challenging situation. I'm not saying that it's not something we looked at and I'll let Keith, you know, talk to it a little bit more. But, but no, his smile and my smile.
I was gonna say, I'm almost sure Keith has a follow-up.
I bet he does.
Yeah, Paul, it's absolutely something. I think that's where it dials back, right? When we started all of this as a task force, and you'll remember that I emphasized at the beginning that we looked at. And we continue to look at a variety of options, not only of, of what to do, but how to do it. And then funding, how to pay for it. And I think one of the, the great values that we had in the task force is that we had a lot of smart people in the room. And one of those is a former city attorney that some of you might, might know, Andy Mulder. Um, that certainly um, raised a lot of questions that resonated with me. Because the assessment option, especially when you take a look at the entire city at the same time. I think it's fair to say has significant legal questions surrounding it. Um, and additionally, for council members that have sit, who, who have sat through this. And remember special assessment proceedings and all the steps in that process, in particular in small areas. and remember special assessment proceedings and all the steps in that process, in particular in small areas, that has a lot of operational challenges to it on top of the legal challenges. I think there's a lot of, there's significant hesitancy that that's a model for something that's not slow, you know, and something that's not ubiquitous. I think the demand aggregation option three model might have the possibility if you get a neighborhood or a group of people together and they would pursue a special assessment, that, that kind of fits with a historic use. But to do kind of the entire city at the same time, you, the special assessment model, there's a lot of people that don't think that that's such a great idea and I will, I will gladly count myself as one of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
While the things, a certain neighborhood already have fiber optics under their development area, how we deal with that situation? If you do millage, they will say, well, they have it. Why do we still pay more? They already paid for it when we built a house.
I think, I think the issue there, Sue, if, again, if you look at the city of Holland, I know there was, there's a particular residential development, for example, that we did a deployment of our active ethernet fiber some years ago in, in Holland. And there's not a lot of residential really other than that that's covered. We are working on another development that's a little bit west of the downtown. And I think we'll have to kind of cross that, that bridge when we get to it. But one of the thought processes that we'd have is that we would take the rates that they currently are at and, and reduce them down to the, the rates for the service like everybody else has. So essentially they would see a reduction in their monthly bill if they already are on that. And then, you know, obviously they'd have the responsibility in sharing of the, the millage and, and you know, that would probably be it because the drop is already, you know, connected. So they would just go down to that level of service at that point. But again, there's a little bit of work to do to really kind of get the fine point to that. But that in concept, that's what I think would happen.
Yeah, and Dave's being kind there. There's a little bit of work to do on that issue and depending on the direction that we may or may not pursue, there's a whole lot of work to do on a whole lot of different topics depending on, on if there's a direction that we go, right? So we are not pretending to say we've chased every issue to the ground, either whether the cost or, you know, the what-if scenarios, right? Because we've certainly gone down those paths also. What we really wanted to focus with you on tonight is kind of that, that broad, right? And I'm, we, we know that you and others would generate a whole bunch of specific things that we'd have to do some work on. You know, if we'd ever get to the point of actually pursuing a specific approach.
And, and I do see a member of the public there that, that would like to make a comment. I just want to let them know we're not ignoring you, but under Robert's rules of order, this is not enough, this is not a point where we engage with members of the public. So it's just the members of city council and the board of public works board that are going to be commenting here. But we do have the opportunity for public comment at all of our meetings. Or you could send public comment to the email at publiccomment@cityofholland.com and we would be able to get your comments at that, that point. But are there, are there other members of either one of the boards that have questions or comments? Yeah, Raul?
Am I muted? I am, right? Yeah.
Yep.
So I stepped away, I think at just the wrong time and missed the presentation about the options. And I think I'm getting the sense of, so there's, there are three, right? The first one I'm assuming is, is no, no pursuit. The second, the second one being, oh, perfect.
Yeah, they, they all are pursued in some case, but if, I mean, that's a direction we could receive too, is don't pursue. I mean, but we, we do have a fallback is sort of our option three, we sort of see as a fallback and maybe just a tweak on the way we do things today, Raul. One and two are just a slight tweak in terms of how the drop would be paid for either through the rate structure or maybe through a commitment that could lower the cost on a monthly basis because there'd be a commitment over a longer period of time.
Okay.
Just a general question. I don't know if the attorney's online here or not tonight, but the do we foresee any issues, Pete, with Comcast or AT&amp;T coming back and challenging us in this process because you already have some infrastructure?
That's a great question. And I participate in the national broadband development community to try to see what incumbent carriers do as these types of projects come up. So we've had a community-owned fiber infrastructure for over 25 years and happily coexisting, in my opinion, with the carriers. And we are not looking in any way to kick them out of town. They provide service here. We hope to challenge them to provide a better service by offering our community more choices. Not only that, the open access model is really designed to open this system and this investment to the telecommunications businesses to come in and utilize that, just like the Rhodes conversation that Dave had. So the, 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 the conversation on broadband is changing. That we are not seeing as much resistance from local levels by telecommunications companies. It's not to say that we wouldn't see it here in Holland. It really sort of depends on what they want to do. And I hope that we do this in an open and transparent way that shows them that there's an opportunity for them to do better business with lower costs for them. And they say that this is actually an opportunity for us. That's my hope. And, but their response, Paul, I couldn't say.
Let's go with Lynn and then Nikki and then if, Raul, you want to circle, circle back to you, we'll, we'll get you back there again. But let's do Lynn Raymond first.
Yeah, no, I just, I'm, I'm sort of leaning towards option two as well, Mike, but I was just wondering, you, you kind of rejected option one out of hand. So what was your, I mean, I, I have a little bit of an idea about that, but I was just wondering what you were thinking.
You're asking, you're asking out of me?
I'm asking that of you. Yeah.
From, from fairness, the, when it was a shorter payback period, that's what caught me.
Yeah.
If we want to be fair and equitable and try to catch as many people as we can, specifically to what you were talking about, that's, that's the only difference between the two. And that's what turned me off to number one. So.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I agree.
Nikki?
Yes, I'm glad we're having this conversation and I'm glad we are serious about providing broadband. And I agree that option two seems the most possible and the best way to go about it once people understand. It's equitable. We need broadband and I, I agree with all the, everything that's been said. Covid has, has made it clear that families are suffering, schools are suffering. We do all our healthcare online. It's just the way of the world now. And it's, it's part of what we'll have to do. So I appreciate the work. This is a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah, thank you, Nikki. Raul, did you have something you wanted to add? I saw your hand went down. I just didn't want to exclude you from it.
Yeah, no, I, I left my hand up, but I will, I will comment since, since you're calling. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, it's, I'm agreeing. Option, option two seems to be the most equitable and that's kind of what I think I'm, I'm after.
Okay, thanks, Raul. And then Dave, and then back to Paul Lilly.
Oh, yeah. To Dave Koster, when you get information back from CTC, is it?
Yes.
Name of the company, I'm assuming that. Well, you said you were going to get revised costs on the passing fees. And I'm assuming that any kind of drop fee difference that would be reflected too?
Yes. And also we're going to ask them to help us put together the, the operating cost estimate as well, so that we can figure out the rate structure that would be associated with that for the network operations. And so we, we should have a much better picture of the whole thing, you know, when they're, when they're done with that here over the next, next month or so.
Good. That, that would be good stuff to know. I'm glad you're doing that. My other, the other thing that's just sort of bouncing around in my head is I tend to gravitate toward the option two as well. I'm curious the cost for the drop, I mean physically, just the mechanics of this, the intention is to create a drop to every household. So it's not a matter of a property owner opting in or out of having that drop. The intention is to provide it to everybody, right?
The intent is that way. I mean, they're going to, the millage would be a responsibility from, for all. We expect that with the millage being responsibility for all, there would probably be a very high interest level and, and subscription level for the drop. But the, the system was, is designed in such a way where there's actually a termination point in the, in the right of way that another drop cable with a connection can hook to it and then, then serve into the house. And so it doesn't have to be built on day one for every home. It'll be provisioned for the, the design of the system, not to get too technical, but there's actually a cable for every home, you know, that comes out of these cabinets. So it's not like you have to share a cable. It's just that you would have a spot out at your road end. It's sort of like having that water line out there where the tap, you know, it's tapped, but maybe the service line's not connected yet. And that, that's why that option is in there either through rates or through a commitment level. And so if somebody didn't want to do it, you know, they would have the millage responsibility, but that would pretty much be where it ended.
Oh, yeah, okay. So I'm trying to wrap my head around that. And that example of a water hookup came to mind too. It's like you have to pay that hookup fee to go from the the city property to your house. So I guess one of, the reason I'm asking this is kind of an alternative to the, you know, a millage for the passing build out and then financial responsibility on the property owner for the drop. I'm wondering, just hypothetically, nobody get nervous here, but if the cost of those drops were also included into the initial millage.
Yeah.
So that, so that everybody was paying for the whole shebang, right?
Yeah.
I mean, eventually, if this gets built out the way we hope it will, the property owner is going to wind up paying for it one way or another, right? So I'm just, I'm curious about the differences between those two.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great point. It's something actually, Keith and I had another conversation about this afternoon, actually, and I'll, I'll tell you.
You're not laughing though.
No, not this time. No, that's right. But, but actually, what, what's interesting about that is, you know, the millage, there, there's an element of you have to pay for a millage. I understand that if it gets voted in, people are going to be responsible for it. Can we really tell somebody they're responsible for putting a piece of electronics on their house? That we have, you have to do this. You have to put a piece of electronics on your house. That might be a little bit tougher situation there because that's part of the drop. And if you don't have that electronics, then there really isn't anything to bring the drop to. So, you know, I, we started thinking about the mechanics and, and the issues associated with maybe getting a refusal, you know, associated with that. The other issue is that the millage probably is going to be about a 20-year millage, probably at the, at the shorter end, when we look at that range. The electronics is about a seven to 10-year life. So if we included the electronics in that, that would be a little bit challenging to line up with the millage life. But I'm not saying that we couldn't explore that for the physical drop, the fiber itself, it would probably add another, you know, six tenths of a mil to that if we did something throughout the city 100%, you know, deployment in order to do that piece of it. But the electronics then would be that extra $530 or so. That would be one you probably wouldn't want to put in the millage, even if you put the physical drop fiber infrastructure in the millage, just because of the life expectancy of that piece of equipment.
I think we can work on the math, though, putting the, the component of the hall, in-home electronics as part of the service. And then the millage would cover the passing, the drop and the core electronics, which are pretty expensive. But I think, Dave, this would be good for the CTC study to take those guys and we can punch the numbers and see what it looks like, Dave, and, and potentially offer that as a solution if it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, to your point, Dave, you know, I got a water meter and a gas meter in my house. Nobody asked me if I wanted it or not. It was just part of the deal, but good answers from you both.
And I think part of that point is that we do want it to be accessible to everyone, no matter what their income. So somehow, whether the millage or some kind of, you know, as Lynn mentioned, kind of the Holland Energy Fund, you know, there's some kind of little fund, whether privately or publicly financed, everyone equitably needs to have access.
Let's have Keith do a follow-up and then we'll go to Paul Lilly and then Diane Hayward.
Yeah, just real quickly, and, and yes, Dave, Dave and I were not laughing, but we were smiling because Dave, that was a really good question, right? And we were talking about that right up till, I don't know what time this afternoon. You know, and I think that's why if there's kind of a growing for option two, understanding that in so many instances already with the utility for that drop extension, there is the ability to do that payback over time, which in a way is a net doing the exact same thing. And if you would compare the cost there, you know, Dave, what did you say? Like even if you, if you'd say like, okay, the drop is $1,300 for a home, let's say. And you have situations where you allow for a commitment and a payback to spread that over 10 years. You know, you're looking at a pretty minimal cost. And if you would take that same cost and roll it into a millage with all the bonding cost and the interest cost and all those types of things. Quite frankly, I'm not sure the home, the homeowner is coming out ahead. I, I could probably, you know, run some math there that we could do, but I would, I, I could quite possibly say the homeowner is coming out behind on that issue. Which is why, you know, I, I think if, no one's asking, but I think we were kind of thinking option two makes a lot of sense ourselves.
And we, we can run some things to Brown, make sure, you know, we've got some things understood. I think Keith, Keith's right on, on, on that. I think there's obviously, the longer you recover, I mean, if it's, you know, there'll be pieces of it that might be lower cost. There might be other elements, obviously, that might be more cost effective from a deployment standpoint. If we can build out to every home at the same time, as opposed to coming back and then picking up homes along the way, even though there's that point in the road where you've got that connection to be able to like go off at that point. So I mean, we can, we can explore those things, but I think part of it is we don't have all the answers yet to on if we're going to put a millage in and the millage is approved, does that mean the homeowner has to allow, you know, a piece of electronics to be able to put on, put on their home as well? Now, maybe not a lot of people would, would fight against it at that point because they know they're paying for it in any regard. But it's just some things that we didn't know that we had all the answers to, so we didn't throw that out there as an option. But it is something that we can, you know, continue to explore a little bit.
The sensitivity analysis too, I, I would say, we, we haven't used that term, but that's where like a survey and getting more community feedback and having conversations, because I think everyone understands this, but just to make perfectly clear, when we talk about a millage, you know, that, that would be a commo, a community voted millage. So it's, it's a, it's a public vote. It's not a council vote. Tim Hemingway, it's not a BPW vote, so, or board vote. So that would be a community vote. So I think that's something that we have to keep in mind also where at some point, you know, a millage at too high of a rate, you know, what if it doesn't pass?
Some marketing to do and if this broadband would be as reliable and eventually as affordable as other BPW services are, I'm on.
Paul and then Diane, and then I saw Quincy's hand go up there too. So go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, Nikki just brought up that point. Thank you very much. We all have a reasonable time on the board because we don't have a lot of problems with people complaining as they have in Texas. However, my, my issue is really going to be not an issue, but part of the opportunity we have for continuing education. If Pete could address a question that some of us might get due to the marketing that's on the television, the wonderful 5G and the new systems being provided, why do we need to do this when that's going to be here momentarily?
A quick one.
Yeah, so mobile data services are an awesome tool. We all have a smartphone in our pocket and it's a great beneficial way to connect to the internet. But why? But um wireless technologies have um minimum bandwidth. And they, uh, when you compare the bandwidth available from a wireless technology to the bandwidth available from fiber, the wireless technology is like a pinhole and the fiber is like a thirty-six inch water main. I mean, it's the physics of how much data you can move on fiber optic cable just blows it away. So five G and um Leo satellites, low earth orbit satellite internet service, which is uh coming available now, has a place in broadband for sure. Because some people, it's very hard to get fiber optics to their home, but they need internet and five G and um Leo satellites are great for that. But um I just saw a um an article today about five G where one of the carriers is saying, we recommend that you turn off five G because your older LTE is working better than five G. I don't know what that's about.
Pete, I was, I was gonna add on, what what does five G need?
Yeah, so that's a great point. Um, five G is a very high density um infrastructure. Their literal uh five G towers are called micro cells and they have to be deployed in a city like every two thousand feet. And every single one of those needs to have a backhaul or fiber optics to connect it up to the greater internet. So now you're building fiber through an entire town to support five G and uh
Which by the way, we'll have, so we can help lower the cost if people are using, if carriers are using five G, it'll actually help the operating cost for others in the city because they could be using that open access network as well.
Yeah.
Diane, did your arm get tired there?
No, uh, Paul actually asked my question, so I got it answered, but I did want to just make a comment, and that is that we have individuals who refuse to allow us to update their their uh meters into their homes because they were sure we were listening to them.
Yes.
So I have to believe we're going to have people who don't want you to connect to their home in any way, because they're going to be convinced that we're listening into their conversations. So we have to educate, 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 so that people understand what this is all about, so.
Yep. Uh Quincy and then Lynn Raymond.
Diane, I solely agree with what you said. Um, there's some points also, uh Keith, I I appreciate you touching on the um on the uh millage being a something that the community votes on. Um, I believe that the education piece, uh, so I'm gonna back up a little bit. Um, the community survey that's going to be done by Frost, I'm assuming, and I don't know for sure, that they're gonna pick the tool on what we use and how we get all that data. Would that be correct?
Truly?
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, Frost uh uses uh their, the technology uses Qualtrics for data analysis. Um, what we're looking at is um uh sampling a representative population of the community. Uh, so this won't be an open survey. This will be a survey, uh invitation survey that uh is designed to connect with as many different diverse components of our community. That'll be an online survey which has challenges. How do you get survey responses from people that don't have internet? So we're working on ways to do with that, to deal with that as well. Um, we hope to um have that survey running uh for the entire month of April to collect uh data and then uh use the results of that survey. I think ultimately join that up with our cost study updates and uh come back to you guys with an update on that.
So I I I like what you said. Uh, one of the pieces for me is is I guess, do we do the survey, then educate, or do we educate, then do the survey?
Yeah, yeah, and it's a
And I think there's a lot of validity into that because going back to what Keith said, this is something that will be voted on by the community. If we educate first and then put that out there, I think that's going to give us a firmer ground to stand on per se and know what kind of firm ground we're standing on when we look at the uh the possible millage. Um, and as you touched on again, you know, I was looking at some of the tools that are going to be used and they're all internet based.
Yeah.
And then on top of that being internet based, they're streamlined to specific location. And so I'll take my parents for instance. All those tools that we're currently using or that we're proposing to use, they would never look at those. Um, how do we have those groups of people who are that, we'll say, people who are not in the career field for that, right?
Yeah.
And then how do we navigate to connect them to this opportunity for our community?
Yeah, we call that uh technical literacy uh in um the broadband development field. And uh one of the um components of our survey is to start to understand where we have those knowledge gaps in our community and the understanding gaps. One, just uh internet and technology as a whole. How are we doing on that? And the other, the other part is um understanding a a publicly owned broadband infrastructure. Does our community understand what that is and what its value is and uh so forth? So our survey wants to start to poll our community to find out what they think, you know, and and or what they know and what they don't know. This will help us start to develop our education program. You saw the slide on communications. That's part of that process, but that'll get driven further with um with our communications and outreach programs, education programs.
Yeah, you asked about chicken and egg, I think, if I can jump in there on on Pete's answer. I think if you look at the chicken and egg of the whole survey or educate, and I think they've they support each other. Um, you know, as Pete said, some of the things that we'll learn from the survey will help us on our education, but I think that's why we're starting tomorrow with the blog and on on our vision and it lays out what we've learned so far. I mean, there's a lot of information in that blog. This first one's a fairly lengthy one that talks about what we've learned on our listening tour so far and what this model is, you know, how we're promoting something open access. So we hope to be able to get this deployed and throughout the community and push it, um, push it out and and promote that blog. So anything that you can do to help share, we'll get it to you as well. Um, and we'll just find all of our avenues to try to push that out. But I think that will set some foundation and then we've got some more time over the month of March here to continue to try to bring some more to the table. But it won't stop there. I mean, the survey will help us refine and continue to educate going forward up till the point where we're ready to say we've got a millage question on the ballot if there's a time that we get to that.
Yeah, and in fact, if I can step in just on this, I don't want to bump it, you know, step in front of anyone, but it kind of goes back to, you know, Pete started this in his presentation about community-based decision making. And the way that I think of your question, Quincy is Quincy and Nikki and others that have said education, right? I would say right now it's more like of an engagement and an education about the opportunity and the model, right? And then if if we would anticipate or maybe say, like, if it would go a certain direction, then we could start kind of narrowing in on what exactly would a concept be? There were some really good questions tonight about, okay, what are the details? And one of those important details, right, is the cost. And eventually, like, okay, so are you, is council going to say, yes, we're going to put this on a ballot, right? And then there's a whole nother level of, and of course, the city and the BPW can educate at that point, but we can't advocate for a yes vote. So I think there's a, there's multiple opportunities and challenges as we emerge here where something will, you know, there's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity and challenges to educate and talk about, you know, what Dave said earlier, too, is the value proposition. And then ultimately, it's a, it's a, it's a citizen decision. Is this a value proposition that we support or not?
Interesting question.
Thank you. Um, a a couple of the things. So I'm I'm really looking forward to the um the CTC um information regarding rate structure. Um, and then also, I I, so I'm on the board, or not the board, I'm sorry, but I'm on this committee as well. And we looked at some models from other communities. One of the things that I do not remember for sure, and Pete, maybe you can help me or Dave, but did we look at in inside those models that they had? Did we look to see if they had a portion of that for lower income people? Or did we, did we do that or not?
I don't know that we, I don't know that we did. We can do some research to find out what mechanisms are used. Um, uh typically, you know, um, for example, like for energy, you know, the state of Michigan, the federal government have, you know, their their meat programs and the lie heat program. And then, you know, we've got our own little program that's been created for um uh Alice population as well that we've created kind of in-house. But we created that in-house because the state mandated that you either participate in a program and they had to provide things, or you can kind of create your own thing and we figured that we could get things more targeted back to our community. And this is in electric. So I'm just saying that we have that in electric, but I don't know in a lot of utilities, especially publicly owned, you know, what kind of flexibility there is on things like that. So I guess we'd have to look at that a little bit more. It's a great question. I know it's been brought up a a few times. I know that the the tax approach is one that helps sort of create uh a a scale of responsibility based upon value of the home. So there's some of that kind of built into a leveling mechanism there. But um beyond that, we'd have to kind of consult, I think, too, with what our, what our limits are and what our capabilities are.
Okay, and really goes back to state enabling legislation, right? In some of these other areas with public utilities, there's either allowances or expectations. Um, because there aren't a lot of, or Dave, even is there, it, you know, there's hardly any examples of publicly owned infrastructure, the way that we're talking about in Michigan. So we would only be able to do what's legislatively we're enabled to do.
Yeah, yeah, there's the township of uh uh Linden Township over by the Ann Arbor area built their own under a millage situation. Um, there's others that have done it on rates that have been really sort of tremendously underserved, like Seboing. Um, and then, you know, we can look to some of those cases in those areas to see if they've been able to enact anything that's support mechanisms for low income, but outside of the state, otherwise, we could take a look at that.
Yeah, I'll just add real quickly, Quincy, this is a very important topic in broadband development and um I research it a lot. Um, digital equity is a term that we use in uh broadband development to make sure. The great story is Kansas City. They built fiber all through Kansas City and the adoption rate was great on one side of the railroad tracks, the literal railroad tracks through town and not so great on the other. And the other side was the lower income side of Kansas City and the broadband development um uh resources uh organization within Kansas City had a real problem. So they had ended up having to address it later. And they did some great work. And many org, many communities throughout the country have found ways to solve these issues. And I think it's something that we need to start talking about earlier than later. And so um thanks for bringing it up. And it will be part of our recipe in one way or another. We'll have a way to respond to it.
Great, thank you. Looking forward to it.
I hope that's a promise, Dave, that uh we wasn't too much. What we as a community will find a, we as a community will find a way to um uh meet the needs.
And that might be some of it, right? It it may not be on the public side of things, but um, we have a lot of options here, too, so.
Yeah, the the um federal government uh just uh announced a very large um uh stipend for uh low income broadband. And uh people that can afford broadband today can sign up for fifty dollar a month um funding from the federal government that should last for the next six or eight months, then I don't know what will happen.
Lynn Raymond, did you?
My, my question was answered, yep.
All right, great, thank you. Anyone else?
You'll allow me, uh, just one more thing. I think as as that group gets going, I think it's going to be pretty important to get some uh ideas of a timeline in in a very whiteboard, very erasable, very changeable, but kind of what kind of a framework are we looking at here, a timeline and what critical steps along the way would be there? Just so as we have these discussions with other individuals, we can tell them that this is not something that you're going to see tomorrow. It it's going to be something built out. And then if you could even include in that, if in fact, we got a everything working perfectly and moved to the end, what kind of a build out timeframe is this? Are we talking about in the city? Because it's impossible that everybody's going to get it at the same time.
Well, that's exactly right. I mean, it it won't be at the same time. And I I think, you know, one of the things I want to be very clear, we're a long way from being able to give specificity on that. Now, I will, uh, we're working, we're working hard at getting these numbers in, but I'll tell you, I've told Keith, too. I said, just getting a cost estimate from CTC will not give me enough comfort to be able to say, you know, do you want to put it on the ballot and and request that maybe you want to consider that? You know, I would want to probably engage in a certain level of actual engineering and maybe even soliciting of um some bids, you know, to make sure that there's a high level of confidence, both in terms of the number and in terms of the uh timeframe associated with that. So you know, I think we're gonna, before putting this to something where we're going to recommend that you put it on the ballot or ask that if you want to put it in the ballot. You know, I I know for us, we're going to want to have a high level of confidence in in where we're at.
Absolutely.
And I absolutely agree with what Dave said, so uh there's no uh disagreement there. The there's a lot of information to tr- to track down here. Um, s- so we've got, we've got work ahead of us. The other thing I'm I'm just going to let you know. Um, and then I'm going to have a question today because I really believe in being as clear as possible and kind of managing expectations. I'm gonna, so one, you know, there's other things in the community that are talking about millage requests, too. So my guess is there might be even people or groups out there that are listening to this and are kind of going, oh, like, um, you know, what what does that look like? And when are they talking about that? So I think that at some point would probably have to be part of the conversation for this group, quite frankly. Um, I don't think it's a secret that one of those is a community uh in an investigation of community college. Um, so I I think that's part of it to factor into all of this also, where there's a lot of levels of work and in planning and unanswered questions yet to track down. Dave, then I'm going to ask you a question. So um, w- we're hearing at least, and I've marked down maybe four people, four people on council and um that have talked. I I don't know if I've gotten to that magic number five yet, and no one's committing themselves to anything here. But um just to be clear, so let's say option two is is what we pursue.
Yep.
And let's say the community thinks it's a wonderful idea. So right now, I know I purchase my internet from a provider and the way that I pay for that is one bill. With the option two model, can you just one more time, so everyone's clear, say wh- what different ways someone would pay for that?
Well, again, I think, I think uh yeah, so the 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 way they would pay for that under option two is they would get a tax bill for the infrastructure.
Yep.
Which would help dramatically lower the service cost for the actual service that's being provided. Now, we we will, under this model, what we've done with our other service providers today is we've provided um a wholesale rate. We've also offered a retail rate for the internet service provision. So in our downtown, um, it's uh eighty-five dollars a month. I'm not saying that's the rate because we know that it's going to be dramatically lowered with this sort of situation. But we offer it for eighty-five dollars a month. We offer uh uh internet service at a gig speed in our downtown, gig up, gig down. Um, we also offer a wholesale rate to other providers if they want to have a relationship with with customers because they can package things together differently and provide other services to them. And and that's that middle tier that we talked about. Again, if you go back to the slide deck, again, I'm not asking Matt necessarily pull that up, but if you remember that middle tier, you know, the idea behind that is that um, you know, an open access model is one that allows many. And and Pete talked about, and the question came up about what what's Xfinity, what's Comcast, you know, going to do? Um, you know, we hope they say we want to use this system instead of having to put our own dollars into reinvestment here, because that you know, might not be happening that fast, or maybe Holland's not a priority for them for other area, uh compared to other areas. Um, that they still might have interesting things that they could bring to the table. That they still might have interesting things that they could bring to the table. So, but if a customer wants to be with the BPW, we'll be the internet service provider if they want to do that. And therefore they'd get a bill from us. And that bill would be for the, that would cover the network operations, it would cover the internet service. And then all they'd have to do is decide what they want to subscribe to, whether it's Hulu with channel lineup or YouTube. Or maybe again, there's others that come to the table. And I think that we've seen that happen in other communities where we've, where infrastructure's been built. Once that's been built, maybe they haven't been there before, but all of a sudden they're going, hey, I don't have to build anything. I've got some really interesting service opportunities here. I'm going to come and make those available in your community. And we encourage that, you know, we want, we want this to pay off for people in a way where they're making the investment in the future enabled infrastructure. We want, we want a lot of options to come to them. So I think that's how it could happen. But again, if you're happy with BPW, you like BPW, you want BPW to be internet service provider, we do it in the core downtown today and we would do that here too. And so it'd be a bill from us that would cover all that.
So a property, a, a property tax bill? A spread out over time, if I chose to do that, bill for the drop?
Yep.
A, and really probably we're talking more a charge on an already existing bill that I get from the BPW, but
Yep.
The property tax, the spread out cost to the drop, the monthly service rate for the service. And I could do that either with BPW or I could get that with another provider. But you'd be paying that and there'd be some costs that would have to go back to the PPW for keeping.
Yeah, we would charge that internet service provider a wholesale rate essentially. So it'd be, it'd be embedded within the cost of service that they're, they're providing to that customer.
Perfect. And then if I really might like Netflix and Hulu and Disney Plus, then I'd be paying those, you know, as kind of that over the top service.
Correct.
And I'm sure everyone understood that perfectly. But, but in terms of education, right, and expl. Like those are the types of things that I think are really key. And I actually wanted to go through that with everyone because then as you get questions, that's what we're talking about of, of what it would be. And I, I'm perfectly comfortable going on record of saying the opportunity, the exciting opportunity is we believe that that over time clearly is a very cost competitive and an attractive situation for our residents. Yeah, good. I, I've just got to, as, as I want to do, I've got a couple of things that I want to say at the end here. First, Keith, I'm going to answer you and just, just simply say five to you. You said you had four. You were doing a head count of council members, so I'm giving you five. And, and then also I've, I've also sit on this, this task force. And I remember clearly a year ago, standing in the lobby of the BPW with Keith and Andy Mulder and scratching our heads and thinking about not only how difficult it would be to deal with the funding issue of this, but also in how difficult it would be to have the public come to the, the conclusion that this is something that they want and that they need. And the second part of that, I think that COVID did a whole lot of, a good, a good service to us in showing the public that this is something that we definitely want and that we need. And to piggyback off of Mike Trithu, he said, well, it's, I think it's moved beyond the if we do this to now the when do we do this? And I think that decision may have already been made, at least informally in this discussion. I think the answer to that, the when is now. You know, as, as get that time, timeline moving as quickly as possible. The, the primary question in my mind is how, what's the best way to be able to do it, to be able to serve the community? One of the great things I think that we have working on our side on this is we're not just starting to think about this. We've been thinking about this for a couple of years now and laying some really good foundational work on, on this. So it's not just starting from scratch. We've got a great place to move from. And to paraphrase Tim Hemingway, and Tim, I know that you said, but I don't think you even remember when you said this, but it's, it's a phrase that rings through my head all of the time. This is Holland, Michigan. If we're going to choose to do something, let's choose to be the best. Let's figure out the best way that we can do this. And we will, and we will get that done. And I think that the community will understand that when Keith starts, you know, wrecking, adding up those four fingers in his hand of those different cost elements of this, that if we're able to do what Pete said, which is we can, if you take all three or four of those and you add them together and it's equivalent to what you're paying now in the short term and less than what you're going to be paying in the long term. And the service is going to be faster and better and more reliable than what you had before. I don't think it's going to be that difficult for the community to say, we're willing to pay for that. And we've got the great history of the BPW's service history and reliability and cost competitiveness and ability to be able to get the job done that's really going to be helpful for all of us. I, I could not be more excited about a long-term project. And this in my mind is a really big deal for this community. Not just for the school kids who need internet, not just for the people that are living it, working from home now that need the internet. Not just this guy who likes to watch Hulu and Netflix and Disney Plus and Peacock and all of those. But for the future of this community economically, to be able to say to people who are now able to choose where they want to live, they don't have to live close to where the corporate headquarters are anymore because they're not necessarily going into work at the corporate headquarters anymore. They can choose to live anywhere else. It's another reason for them to choose Holland, Michigan as the place to live. And I think that that's going to be enormous for the success of this community in the future. So if that's, if there's any way I could put a bigger yes on it, more exclamation points, I would, but Dave.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. And I just, you know, I'll take a minute too to, to just highlight something. I know you were there on Monday evening and I know it hasn't made a lot of news yet and I'm actually surprised about that. Because we had another big community decision that was done, Pete highlighted on his slide deck with the sustainable return on investment leading to Highland Energy Park. And on Monday, the board approved a budget for this next year that's being sent to city council. And obviously it's, you know, contingent on city council's approval. But within that budget involves the redemption of ninety one million dollars of bonds that were issued to pay for that and the remaining two bonds over the next two years afterwards. So that community investment is, is paid off, is going to be paid off in, in its entirety if the plan is followed. And then on top of that, in the plan is a 10% rate reduction this year, which for the average residential customer is just under six dollars a month or about seventy dollars a year. So hopefully maybe a little bit of that could also be put towards the investment here on the customer's perspective. When they're looking at signing up for this, they're going, I got a little bit more money in my pocket right now. The BPW electric customers on a residential level enjoy about a thirty five dollar a month advantage over the neighboring investor on utility.
Yep.
Had to get that plug in, I'm sorry.
That's all part of it, Dave. I think that's, that's part of the, the, the sell, if you will, of hey, BPW has been able to provide you reliable service really cost effectively. And not only are they lowering your rates, but they're, they're paying off the infrastructure cost early and saving, you know, tens of million, millions of dollars in the process. I think that, that's a really good piece of that puzzle to say, you're in good hands with the BPW with, with your utilities. And this is just going to be another piece of that portfolio moving forward that the city of Holland and our residents can be really confident in.
And our community makes good decisions because the community is the one that decided to build HEP like it's built there. And it's the vision and the decision we made as a community that has us in the place we are today with energy. And thanks to everybody in this town.
Any other questions or comments? Any other, we've got, I know on the agenda, I don't have it in front of me, but there's another business element there. Any other business we need to cover, Mr. Van Beek?
Nope, not unless there's any questions. We
Alright, yeah. You're good?
You guys are stuck to me talking.
Alright, anything, anything else from anybody else? Otherwise, we can call it a night and thank, and thank you, everyone. Thanks for the BPW board. Thanks for staff. Thanks for the great presentation tonight. Thanks council members and have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Hey, hey, Pete.
We're not holding.